For being here, the first item on our afternoon assignments is a public hearing in regards to ordinance 21-10. Mr. Hewitt, you want to speak to that?
This is Mr. Evans's item.
Mr. Evans, you want to speak to this, please, sir?
I'll just back up. I want to pay attention. Where we at?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay. 160D, public hearing. This is for the changes that were made under the guidelines that came down from the statute that was written. Those guidelines required us to make changes in the ordinance, bring us in line with those statutes. They encompass quite a few changes. We've made those changes. And we brought it before the board at the last meeting to have it brought before the public hearing.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are we ready to have you read any written input that you?
We have not received any written input for the public hearing.
Okay. Do you have anybody signed up to speak in the public hearing?
No, sir.
Would the commissioners allow me to ask the audience if there's anybody that would like to speak?
Sure.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the room want to speak to this item in the public hearing? All right, hearing none. We declare this public hearing over. Madam Clerk, if the record shows no input from the public, written or oral, and we'll move over to the regular town meeting, which, first item on the agenda. Those of you that are in the room, if you want a copy of the agenda, it's on the table in the back. Let's take a moment and bow our heads for reflection and contemplation, just for a moment. The second item is called to order. Welcome all of you. I think I recognize all the faces in the room, and everybody knows the program, the way it works. Number three, so I pledge allegiance to the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number four on the agenda. First, may I say, I'm going to try to do a better job this meeting than I did the past meeting. I've had a little bit of sleep, and I'm in better shape tonight than I was last time. I'm not worn out today. Mr. Hewitt, I think you had some...
Yes, sir. Would ask that the board move item 10 down to after item 12 in the agenda. In other words, move item 11 and 12. I'm sorry. Let me back up. I'm asking for items 11 and 12 to be placed immediately after the discussion and possible approval of the bond in item 8, before the police report.
So you just move 11 and 12?
Uh-huh. And in addition...
Item 9.
Yes, sir. In addition, I need to add ordinance, some budget amendments into the year, housekeeping budget amendments, ordinance 2114, 2115, 2116, and 2117. Those are water, sewer, and recycling amendments that are necessary to perfect our year-ending transactions for our audit.
Where do you suggest that we do that?
I'd be okay if we moved it. I don't want to take precedence over any of the commissioners' things, but I see that there's an audit committee item in item 15, so maybe before item 15?
Item 14-8?
Yes, sir.
Budget?
Ordinance amendments 14, 15, 16, and 17. That's it for me.
Commissioners, does anybody have anything? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The amended agenda is approved. Let's look at number five, consideration of approving the minutes for May 7, May 18, May 20, and May 21. I'd like to hear a motion considered approving all of these.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes considered. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others say no. Okay. Madam Clerk, number six, do you have anything in regards to items on the agenda comments?
Nobody signed up. There are three people who did write in comments. They're in the back of the room. You have copies before you, and they're on the internet for anybody who does not hear that would like to move them.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Number seven, Mr. Hewitt, in regards to 2113?
Yes, sir. That's the budget ordinance for the upcoming fiscal year, and that represents the spending plan for the upcoming fiscal year, but starts 1 July. It's a result of your goal-setting, the public workshops, and staff involvement over the course of the last three months. Public hearing was held on the 4th of June with no comments received at the hearing nor any tonight regarding adoption as presented. The ordinance complies in all respect with the Physical Control Act and, as such, is ready to be adopted should the board desire to do so.
Okay, Madam Clerk, so we're in order for a motion for approval in its time. Can we go ahead and do that now?
No.
We can?
Sure can.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve ordinance 2113 fiscal year 2122 budget ordinance as presented.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All right, any more discussion of any kind? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion carries, and the budget is approved. Are we in order to say that, Mr. Hewitt? All right. Very good. Number eight, Assistant Town Manager Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Before I begin, I'd like to recognize that our bond attorney, Mr. Scott Leo, from Parkopoe Adams and Bernstein LLP, is in the audience to answer any specific questions that you have. And on speakerphone, with the speaker in the center of the table, is Andrew Carter with DEC Associates. They're our financial advisor for the projects. So the first document that you have before you is the bond order. It was prepared by the bond attorney. We're in the process of going before the local government commission with our application for the bridge loan financing for July 13th projected date, and these documents are what we need to complete our application process. That application did go in last week. That project will mitigate sand losses from four storms, Florence, Michael, Dorian, and Izaeis. The bond order authorizes issuance of special obligation bonds of the town of Holden Beach and the pledge of the FEMA and the state reimbursement amounts to repay the special obligation bonds. Suggested motion is approval of detached bond order related to the issuance of special obligation bonds for the town of Holden Beach.
Mr. Hewitt, do you have anything to add?
This is the almost last administrative step to take before we can get to the local government commission. We've plowed these roads long and hard now for about four years with all of these projects coming together, and this is what we need to do in order to move forward.
The hurricane, man. Mr. Hewitt, are you looking, hoping that we're going to have a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
That's where we are.
I can't go to the local government commission on the 12th without it.
So we need to move tonight on that?
Yes, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bond order related to the issuance of special obligation bonds for the town of Holden Beach.
Mr. Brown, you say? Any discussion? Ms. Sullivan? Ms. Pat? Anybody? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others say no, unanimous, it carries.
Okay, in the second part of our paperwork, here's a resolution for issuance of special obligation bonds for the beach nourishment project. Again, it is for the four storms. The resolution sets the terms of the special obligation bonds of the town of Holden Beach, reflecting the terms of the proposal by PNC Bank to purchase the special obligation bonds from the LGC and the town. There was a change. You guys were supplied one sheet that had the terms difference as far as when the first payment was due. That's page 5 and 6, exhibit D and A of your document. Other than that change, suggested motion is approval of resolution 2110, setting forth the terms of special obligation bonds to be issued by the town of Holden Beach.
With those change, with the page insert?
Again, you're looking, hoping for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution 2110, setting forth the terms of the special obligation bonds to be issued to the town of Holden Beach.
Mr. Brown?
Say it.
Discussion, anybody? Ms. Sullivan, any?
Could you add with the change? I'm sorry, could you add with it?
As amended?
Yeah.
You okay with that? All right, Ms. Sullivan?
I would just like to ask a few questions to the bond attorney.
Has he got a mic? Has his microphone on?
On my end.
For my benefit as well as for the people who aren't here to look at the documents. If we look here, the initial interest rate is 1.64 percent, and that'll be for the first year.
Yes, sir.
And then it's a variable rate that can change depending on what the interest rates are.
Right. If, the way this works is that that 1.64 is good for the first year. If the town is in a position to pay it off with the reimbursements at the end of the first year, then that's that. If all the reimbursements haven't come in yet, then PNC will extend it for another year, and they'll offer a rate, whatever the market rate is at that time.
Up to 12 percent, not to exceed.
Yes, sir.
That's the cap.
That's, gosh, ridiculous.
Let's hope that doesn't happen, huh? The amount that we're authorizing to borrow is 46 million, and I assume that's because that's the amount that we're authorized to spend under FEMA. But we really don't intend on borrowing 46 million dollars, do we?
Up to that, that is what the application package with the local government commission put forth.
I understand that, but isn't our intent to take whatever reimbursement money we have and give it back so that we're not borrowing the total amount, we're borrowing segments of the cost, the total cost at a given time?
Well, the principal would come down, but initially, the full monte of 46 million dollars, up to that amount, would need to be borrowed. Now, will we, what, will the bids come in? If the bids come in at 30, we won't need to go that high.
I got you.
Right up. The local government commission wants you to take down the full amount that you need to finance the project, to have that in the bank, to be ready to finance it and complete it, and then you'll pay it back to PNC as those reimbursements come in.
I got you. Is the interest that we're going to pay on this bond, is that also reimbursable by FEMA?
Yes, that is our understanding. That's the administrative cost that's associated with the project, category Z.
And the maturity date is 2024, so we're anticipating that we'll be able to complete the project, be reimbursed, and be able to repay the, whatever amount we borrowed by 2024?
Yes, sir.
And if that's not possible, there's a two-year extension to the maturity date?
No, I was mistaken about that earlier. There is not in this document. No, there is sometimes that feature in these, but that's because, I think because the expectation is that you'll, that this project will be completed by April, that you already have built in, what is that, two years, basically, for the FEMA reimbursement to come back in.
I read that somewhere, and I didn't mark it.
Yeah.
Yeah, two years.
There is a reference in here to useful life being five years of the project, and that's just a, that's a finding that LGC requires, basically, you're not borrowing money for more than the useful life of the project.
That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? You ready to vote?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
If others say no, it's unanimous. Ms. Christie, you got anything else?
No, sir. I was just going to end the call with our final review of the budget. If you guys are good with that, and then we'll push.
Is there anything else you want the commissioners to do on this subject?
I think we're good.
With that, Mr. Hewitt and our bonds people, thank you very much for all of your hard work.
Thanks, Scott. Travis Sykes, let's see.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, I understand you want us to go to number 11. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Item 11 as moved forward in the agenda is Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans?
Okay.
Your microphone on?
All in good.
Thank you.
First time anybody's ever asked me to be...
Louder. All right. This is actually the 160D zoning law consolidation. North Carolina general statutes were changed in order to try to unify the development rules within municipalities and counties. Sometime back when they did that, the board charged the planning staff with making these numerous changes inside the ordinances, and we followed those guidelines and rules that set forth under the statute. Once we had completed those, we had, we presented them to the attorney, who reviewed them, and sent them back to us. We brought them to y'all last, at the last meeting. You concluded the public hearing here this afternoon. For those in the public who don't know what this is, we had until July 1 of 2021 to consolidate our ordinances and to bring them into compliance, because that's the day they would have been, they would have been effective anyway. So they gave us to that particular time. So we've consolidated those rules. We've implemented them, or actually changed our ordinance to the point where it matches those requirements. They replaced all of the 153A and 168 portions of the ordinance with a down new unified This ordinance was reviewed. We, to comply with those new rules and the new statutes and the town's land use ordinance is before you now to be approved with those changes. So if you, if you do so, choose to approve it, you can. The next page over in your packet actually has what you must consider, which is the consistency statement from the zoning board. The zoning board approved it a 5-0 as being consistent with our land use plan and our land use section of the ordinance. So I'm presenting it to y'all for approval so that we can get this portion behind us.
All right, everybody understand where we are?
July 1st is the bound deal anyway.
Yeah, the only thing we did was change our ordinance so that people wouldn't be confused.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, can I add something?
Yes.
I want to make sure that Tim is really being very demure in his statement here, that the only thing that we did, he's been working on this thing for better part of a year now. It's not something that just goes like that. So Tim has coordinated with the school of government, he's coordinated with our town attorney, and it's gone to great lengths to ensure that all our stuff is wrapped up tight.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 20-10, 160D changes as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others say no, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk, and we'll go to number 12, Mr. Brown.
Yes. I brought up a question at our last meeting about our street right-of-way, and first of all, I wanted to ask the attorney, did she look into that?
Yes, I looked into what the ordinance was. I just wanted to know...
Is your microphone on?
Yes, I reviewed the ordinance. I just wanted to get feedback from you of exactly what you wanted to change, what you thought the issues were, and how we could possibly come up with a resolution and what you were intending.
I've read the ordinance as it is, and I feel that, Tim, do you have a little information for us?
Well, I mean, I've got, I've got, I've got some pictures if either one of the...
These would be. I've rode around the neighborhood, and I look in places, and I see, like, one place we've got six-by-sixes, four-foot tall, concrete in right beside the asphalt. Go to another spot, we've got a fence built right beside the highway, looks about three-and-a-half, four-foot tall, okay? I go to another spot, and I see little spikes. These are about two to three foot off the asphalt, and they're about 16, you know, 16 inches taller at the most, okay? My thoughts were, you know, what would happen with a little boy ride by on a bicycle, boy or girl, you know, have a little problem to fall off the bicycle, you see? Now, that's town right-of-way. Okay? So my question is, who's responsible? Okay? What I want to do tonight, okay, here we go.
There's his bond manager.
Yeah, yeah, just on, I've got some pictures just... This is, I think this is at the end of the...
That Holden Street.
Yes. This is showing some stuff that's in the right-of-way on the right-hand side. And that's also the corner. There's some of your posted road, it's on that street. There's some of the spikes, some of the pikes and the spikes. This is at the corner of, oh, the Highway, yes, corner of the Highway. You see all the, you see what I took a picture of? There's the stuff on both sides right there that's above us. That stuff is all inside. The right-of-way is over here. See where the arrow's at? That's the edge of the right-of-way. All of this stuff is actually in that right-of-way. There's some of the landscaping timbers. You have a lot of those that go all the way out to the road, with the posts that are sticking up. There's some more of that post and rope that's in the right-of-way. There's a video here of Deal Street, if we get to it. Let me see a few things. I want to do another one.
Nothing like a picture to tell the story.
There's a video here of Deal Street that everyone should see, that really shows you exactly what our town is trying to create to do. You should be here all night waiting on this. How old is that computer?
Oh, it's probably a little...
Well, it's just a, here we go. Here's a video. This is, this is actually Deal Street. Now, you see the posts and the rope and the, all the stuff that's in the right-of-way to gear down? It's almost the entire street on both sides. There's something in the right-of-way on both sides. This is not uncommon on most of our streets. It's not, this is just this way. When you come back the other way, you can see it. Then we went, I went down to eye level so that you could tell exactly where the post and rope were in relationship on the ground to where it's, and how it's actually affecting the stuff. This is coming back the other way. And when we get to the end, a little pause, because I've got to kind of orient myself. The wind was actually blowing pretty good. I'm trying to keep it steady, but, see, even over here, they even got, got it on both sides, even up to here. That's actually in the town right-of-way. Our right-of-way goes all the way out. The most interesting part is right here. There's the right-of-way. This is all inside that right-of-way. And that's indicative of how it's being placed. Whatever's being put into the right-of-way, they either like to come either all the way out to the edge of the road with the timbers and then make it so that you can't utilize it there, or they're actually going with the posted rope. And there was something that was sent out by some organization other than the town that gave some description of where that was supposed to be. So a lot of them are between the edge of the road and four feet, which was never part of an ordinance anywhere. But as we, as we start to do this, you see that they, this would, none of this would be in compliance with what we have now, except for that one post right there. But these actually could be in compliance, but you see where they're sitting in the right-of-way. This is the, this is the outer perimeter of the right-of-way where that pedestal is right there. I've got to move for the vehicles parked right there. Okay? So as we go down, you can see the extent of this.
But as I read the statute, it seems to me...
The order.
The order. It seems to me that, that those are in compliance.
Most all of these are?
They're in compliance.
You have it there that you allow post and rope?
That's right.
Within 10 feet, within the first 10 feet from the road.
That was the, that was the... That was the change that was made in 2018.
Now, you do have, even though the post and rope are allowed, you still, they still have to be in compliance, that it can't be a safety hazard or a speed traffic. I don't know if you, you know, that's kind of a fine line. I think the better way would be to potentially remove the post and rope as allowable period and just allow only your mailboxes and your newspaper boxes.
And also plantings. I mean, we can, we can talk about why we have, we've implemented this ordinance, either later or now, but the idea is to allow people to have control over the property adjacent, the right-of-way adjacent to their property, because the people who live on the east end here have people parking every Sunday, Saturday, holiday in there. We've had so many people complain about how the people who do that, then they empty their trash all over the place. They're rude, they get into fights with the people who live here and own property. So this was an accommodation to allow someone who wanted to leave their property accessible or to protect their property. And another thing it does is it allows someone who, we've talked about this a number of times, you rent a house that only has two parking spaces, but you're going to have five people come down, five cars. This allows that person to park their cars rather than have to drive all over the neighborhood trying to find a parking space. So there are any number of reasons why we've implemented this type of a policy. And for me, I think that the people who live here and the people who rent here have a right to protect up to a certain degree the property that they own and rent, and that this is a, this is a viable way of doing it.
I agree with Mike. We had, we had several months of discussion before we changed the ordinance to how it currently reads. Now, if there are stakes instead of posts, if there are things that are above height, if... if people are putting down railroad ties to keep, to mark a boundary or something, that's not part of this ordinance. But the way it's currently written, written, and with the twenty-four inch post, not spike, post and rope, which is very clear, I think it achieves what the majority of our residents and owners wanted it to achieve. This was very popular. I know why Deal Street is the way it is. There's a public access at Deal Street. And that public access is getting used a lot, and Deal Street, as it was undeveloped, people were used to parking there, and now there's houses there, and people are trying to protect their attempts at lawns and things, because people are just parking down on Deal Street to use that public access. It's the last public access. But, so I understand why Deal is so, I'll say roped off. Uh, the majority of side streets, you don't see so extensively roped off. But again, we did this for our public, for our property owners, and considered post and rope and plantings to be safe.
Just, if I'm not wrong, Tim, tell me, tell me if I am. We, we didn't amend in eighteen the, the post and rope. That was already in. The only thing that we amended in eighteen was that you couldn't park from two o'clock to five o'clock in the morning.
The post and rope was not in. It was, the post and rope was an exception for three properties at the end of OBW on the other side of Deal, because people were turning around there as well. Um, we actually put it in. It was an exemption for just those three apartments. And they added the post and rope, um, for the, for the reasons that she was saying. But it was not part of the ordinance. It was an exception for just three, and that's how they allowed it, the post and rope. We actually put the size and the height for the post and rope in there. Um, and the other section of that one is not changed, apart where you can have up to one foot, where you can plant stables, you know what I mean? And that sort of thing. But there was a section, there was this belief that you needed to stop it within ten feet prior to that, so that there could be maintenance done on the right of way by the town's right of way crew. And there was the belief at that time that, or the usage at that time for parking in the right of ways. It was, it was, uh, so accepted until we actually wrote into ordinances in what portions of the right of ways you could not park. So we recognized that right of way areas were for, for parking. I'm talking about Brian, to the, to the thing, but that's the way it was. And we still have that. We still have right of way areas that are exclusionary, like OBW, under the bridge, with, with boats, or something like that. So that part didn't get, get changed. It actually got expanded, I guess is the best thing to say.
Here's what happens. We're seeing it, you know, like on Brunson Cabin, Marlin Drive, just different places you can go all over the island. So what I'm going to do tonight, I'm going to ask the board that we send it back to TMZ, okay? I want this thing looked at again, but I want this damn rope business to be backed off the right of ways. We don't need the rope to be sitting three foot of the right of way, three foot of the asphalt. We need a very minimal eight feet off the asphalt. Needs to stay clear. If you never know what's going to go, let me bench. Okay? You, you, when you give an inch, they take a mile, and that's what we're up against here. All this was politically motivated. The last gang was in here. They did it for a few other buggies, okay? So when you start, you know, I look and I, it makes me sick on the stomach. I read up in New Jersey, these folks, they can't even get to the beach, you know what I'm saying? And the same thing going on right here. You understand? Oh, well, we're going to post and rope, you know? And then I saw those little spikes. I said, this has gone too far. Okay? Somebody's going to get hurt here. You know what I'm saying? The right of ways that the town owns need to stay town property. The folks bought the property. They knew where their property started. Okay? That's not a question. If they didn't, I mean, you know, I would, I would have investigated enough to see where my property is going to go. Okay? And I'm, I'm just going to ask to begin with that we send it back to TMZ, okay? Let them give us our feedback, but before they make any moves, I want the town attorney to also look into it, what, what we need to do. But I want this business a two foot off the asphalt and up to the asphalt done away with. But that's my motion.
Okay. I've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I guess I don't understand the motion.
To send it back to TMZ for a second.
But what do we want TMZ to specifically do?
We want them to back the ropes up, to give a minimal, minimum of eight foot off the asphalt.
Well, you don't.
No.
We don't need TMZ to do that.
All right, then what do we need to do in order to do that?
This is in the regulatory section, telling the planning, etc., if the board so chooses to do that. Um, for clarification, the planning board never had anything to do with post and rope, telling, that came out of the, the parking committee. And, uh, and was sent to the board through the parking committee. That doesn't, but.
The planning and zoning.
Yeah, planning and zoning never, never took this up. They, it may have run through them out of the committee, but they never. But it is a regulatory rule. It don't have to go back to land, to, to the planning board.
I'll say a few things about it.
Well, we, we need a second discussion. We got a motion on the table.
Well, that's to go back to the planning and zoning board.
We don't have to.
We don't have to.
Don't have to go back.
You don't have to, but you got a motion on the floor to do it. So you either need a second, just rework. Or withdraw your motion and do whatever you guys want to do. But in, to be in order, you have, you have a motion on the floor, and discussion comes after the second. Because if you don't get a second, that means there's no interest in pursuing. Or if you want, if you want to just withdraw it, make yourself a motion to take action, you can do that.
Withdraw it, take a motion to take action.
Okay, that states a motion.
I make a motion that we, we go and back all this post and rope up eight foot off the asphalt. Keep the right of ways of the street clear a minimum of eight feet. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it there.
All right, now you can talk about it.
Now we can talk.
All right. I got a few things to say about it. I, I totally understand people wanting to keep their yards and everything nice and neat, and keep people off of it. The only way we're going to do that, and if this is not a prime example of the people of this town wanting to virtually, and I'll just say it, people want right of way parking done away with. I don't want to see the right of way par- parking done away with with post and rope. You're going to have an island full of post and rope, and there ain't no sense in that. We need to go further than looking at backing it up or moving it at all, and we need to find a solution to the parking problem. You got a public access at Deal Street that the public can't get to, or the people of the island, but not the general public. So the general public drives down to Deal Street to go to the beach. They can't park anywhere, so they can't use the access. I don't understand the point of that. We definitely have a parking problem. We need to eliminate the right of way parking, so people doesn't have, don't have to do anything such as this. And the right of ways need to be kept clear, and they can maintain them however they want, because nobody will ever be able to park on them again. If you want to designate some right of way parking, places that make sense to have right of way parking, then let's designate specific places in the right of way. Like if we could, I don't know, bulkhead in something where nothing can be built, or things such as that, where somebody doesn't have a house next to the parking, then that would make sense to do. But we need to find a solution to this parking, and it's not going to be backing up these things eight feet away. I think if anything, we need to stop them from being put that, I mean, I, you can't, I don't think we could ever do that, because you've already allowed people to do it. But people don't want people parking in their yards. It's simple as that. So they put up post and rope, or they put up whatever, and we don't want to see it up, so we want to move it back. So somebody doesn't get hurt or run into it. There, it, it's, it's, it's damn if you do, damn if you don't. So before, I would support moving things back or whatever. I, somebody needs, we, we all need to get together as a town and figure out a solution to this parking problem that we have. It's, it's an outcry of people that do not want people parking in the marsh. The same thing that we beat up every time we talk about this. Give the people a place to park. A reasonable number of spots. That's the verb. A reasonable number of spots. If it's four hundred, fine. If it's five hundred, fine. But we don't have a reasonable number of spots without using the right of way. And the right of way is being taken up by new construction and post and rope and driveways and any other means that the townspeople can, can do away with it. They're, they're doing, they're giving it their best effort, as you see. You don't park on Deal Street in the right of way anymore. They've shut it down. Now they're going to go to somebody else's street. And then when they shut it down, they're going to go to somebody else's street, until the point where there's not going to be any right of way parking whatsoever. So you either deal with it now, or you deal with it later. And if we keep waiting, the options that we do have as a town to create parking and places for people to, to park are going to be gone. And then I don't know what y'all are going to do. I'm not going to be here to deal with it. I'm doing the best I can to deal with it now. But this is a prime example that this town as a whole, and I, I wouldn't doubt that I'm speaking for everybody, does not want right of way parking, period. It got put in, and I'll back Gerald up. I know why it got put in, and I'm not going to say it, but we all know why it got put in. So I would eliminate completely. If I was going to take any action whatsoever, I'd eliminate completely. But I'm not going to do that, because I think people need a place to park. And until we provide a reasonable alternative to the right of way parking that we do have, I can't support that. Because I, people need a place to park. It's, it's just the way it is. If two hundred parking spaces that the town does actually own to you guys is reasonable, then fine. But we can still eliminate right of way parking. But I don't think two hundred parking spaces is anywhere close to reasonable, and that's all we got, without using right of way parking. That's all we have. Every other parking space on this island is in somebody's yard, or somebody's property, or, or some side of the marsh somewhere, or something like that. Every other spot, except for two hundred is. It's written down. There may be seven hundred on the island, like, seven hundred places to park, but there's only two hundred that we actually own. We could develop some more. We just have to do it. We have to buy something. We have to buy a lot of land. We have to put parking in, spread it out. People, some people aren't going to like it, but I mean, I think it, it just has to be done. So I can't go forward with any of this until we look at the bigger picture, because it's, it's not going to fix. If you, if you want to do something, let's get rid of it right now.
Is it safe to say that, that the better way at the moment is to wait until the parking committee has gone through everything, how we're going to proceed, and revisit this after they forward their findings and their recommendations? And I'm going to say again that moving post and rope back eight feet, again, doesn't accomplish what seemed to be very favorably accepted by our owners, which was, we have a way that is legal to indicate we don't want people parking in our right of way. And if you don't post and rope or do anything, then you're indicating you're okay with people parking in your right of way. And that's how it was defined, okay? But it sounds to me like it's more of a case of, let's get the parking committee's recommendations and what we're going to do moving forward, and then this can be revisited. Not disagreeing with you, Gerald, though, if there are situations that are clearly not twenty-four inches or under post and rope, if there are safety issues or height issues, those can be dealt with on a regulatory basis. They can be, they can basically be told they have to change it. Correct, Tim? Because they're out of compliance.
Yeah, but when I said earlier that that's a point of compliance, I was referring to the two six-foot tall.
No, 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 I understand. I said there are some out of compliance.
We know that post and rope of the two-foot high, it goes, are in compliance when they're in the right of way. Now, we, we know, we're aware of that. We know that. But, um, what it does is, whenever you write a rule which allows something, and it's not specific, and everything it does it say suddenly becomes allowed. It's like having something temporary, and not anything so permanent. It's something temporary. But what, so what happens is, is you get what's called creep into the ordinance. Um, you're always better off to say what's, what's not allowed, and then if nothing else is, you can fall off same. In this particular case, we've got an ordinance that says that you can have certain things up to a certain height. You can have certain things, as long as they're not safety, that, that overcome a safety, a public safety issue. We allow two-foot high post and ropes in the right of way, but you can't have a, you can't have a bush that's too tall that's sitting in your yard if it's in a certain trying, or, uh, you, you know. I, I think that, uh, from a planning standpoint, I was not, uh, I'm more along the lines of what Gerald and, and Brian are saying. I'm really on top of the lines of what Brian's saying from a planning standpoint. But those things are allowed under our ordinance now, but the, the intent with those was, was to, I, I'm assuming, to protect the properties, like Mike said. And at the same time, you could achieve all of that by the recognizable problem of they were really put there to stop people from parking, or, or driving on the grass, or being intrusive to people's pro- immediate properties that was next to those right of ways. Uh, I think the more long-term fix would have been better served to be looked at with open right of ways with rules that don't allow the various things that they're trying to stop, and that way you don't get creeped. So in a sense, I'm agreeing with both Brian and Gerald from a planning standpoint. But yes, if it's not in compliance, we will tell them that it's not in compliance. If it becomes an issue, or if it's a safety issue, certainly you can't put a big rock there. We had, we've had those before. The spikes, we've sent, we've already called and notified the folks, and we're not going to give them much time before we take those posts to the market. I've called three sets of people about the little orange spikes that they like to put up now, that are all along the roads in certain places. I'm assuming they have a sale on their wall, and all the neighbors know about it. So we're, we're trying to, to keep it under control, but I think you would be better for, to, to look at some other way to, to help the citizens, uh, with, with trying to keep that clear, and at the same time, providing something that's better for the town to be able to maintain. Because not everybody puts post and rope in their right of way, and those right of ways get maintained by the town, I believe, right, Chris? Don't we maintain some portions of the right of way?
That's correct.
So stuff on the ground, stuff in the right of way, that, that hinders our ability to make our town as free as we might succeed. I guess I'd say that is.
Well, I've just got two questions, and one's for Tim. Tim, what is, how close can they put post and rope to the asphalt?
There's no designation of the ordinance, but I would deem it to be, start being unsafe at a certain.
Well, and then my second question's for our town attorney. If, if somebody, Gerald said, on a bicycle, or even my car, if I have to move off the road a little bit, or forgot to be in a golf cart, and hits one of those posts and it causes injuries, that's our right of way. Is that our responsibility, or is that the homeowner's for putting it there?
Kind of depends on different things, but the way the ordinance is written, it just says ten feet within. It doesn't have when that stopping point is, so it can, you know, until it gets into that gray area, that being a safety hazard and impeding on traffic, they can put it up. It's just the ten feet window that we're giving it. There's no, you know, so many inches from where the pavement is. It's just a ten-foot barrier. And then you walk up online, as well, was this a safety hazard that the, the town ever addressed, or did it impede traffic, and it was never addressed?
Well, the.
Potentially, yes.
The easement is city property? Is the easement considered city property?
The easement, the land itself is city property.
Mm-hmm.
Underlying land itself.
So if anybody gets injured on city property.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Definitely, I'm sure, no, potentially.
That's, that's. That's, that's, that's what I thought. So putting up hazards like that would be the city's obligation if somebody got hurt.
Potentially.
But, that's not, that's not, wait, that's not it.
We'll, we'll go back to the question I had last week. Is a municipality in North Carolina normally held responsible for an injury that either arises or could have been stopped by the implementation of an ordinance or law?
No, no, no.
So, well, I'm gonna take the other side of it. This is an ordinance. Somebody put something into the right of way. So if somebody was injured by that piece of material that's put in the right of way, normally, in North Carolina, the municipality would not be responsible for that.
And again, it's dependent on the situation. It's not going to, but generally, in terms of municipal liability, you are hurt, whether it is a situation.
Got it?
The attorneys will always look with their deepest pockets.
Sure. There, there's no argument, there's no argument there.
So if you pull off the road and hit one of these posts, and it carries your car up, who pays for it?
You left the road.
That's close to the side of the road. I don't mind the post and ropes if they're back, even, we said eight feet, five feet, just not right up next to the road. That's, you know, it's dangerous.
Well, there, there's a reason why I went to ten feet. It was well-established, it's been well-established here, that our roads are not in the center of the right of ways. Some of these, and this was discussed, some of these streets are left to ride. So if you don't, it's hard to designate how far out you could go, you know what I mean? Or, or how far away from the road you need to be, because in some cases, you could be in, outside the right of way. But that's why I said, if we left it for the full width of the right of way, was it ten feet? I think, actually, as good as one of those, I'd say, one side, the right of way is gonna start again to the property, but it's good from the other side.
I'm kinda with Pat on this one. I, I think we gotta look past it and look at the bigger picture. And if we can't, if we can't do something about the big picture, then, you know, it's gonna be everywhere. And there's no, you know, there's no guideline, really, of how to build it, or whatever. You can, I guess you could string up pretty much whatever you want, as long as it was on a four-on-four, and it was a piece of string. But, uh, I don't know if you had a draw, and I really haven't looked into it. But it, irregardless, it's, it just, it, the people of the island, the property owners of the island, should not have people parking beside their, a lot of times, well-maintained properties in the grass. And they're, and they, they try to keep, making, make this town look nice. A lot of them, all the way to the edge of the asphalt. So I get it. And I haven't met anybody that, that wants it. So I get a lot of, of people calling to wish, you know, hey, they're parking in the marshes. They're parking here, we need to get rid of this. They're, they're using my bathroom, I mean, they're using my shower as a bathroom, just because that's, that's where, that's the only place they have to park. We're not giving them anywhere, any other options to park. That is the only place they have to park. And we can fix it. And I, I think we need to look at it. I mean, I, we can move them back if, if you want. That's not gonna fix the problem. They're just gonna keep going up, and, you know, I don't understand why we have to send anybody a letter to pull up, basically what looked like rebar that's next to the edge of the pavement. Looks like Chris is driving, guys driving by, just say mow and yank them up. I mean, it's, it's simple as that. You didn't put it in right, there shouldn't even be a, I mean, hey, can you get your spikes out of the yard? So, I think we got a bigger problem than moving some ropes back. Um, that's just where I'm gonna leave it. Because I, I don't wanna go make people move something back that I'm trying to get rid of forever. I, I just don't think it ever should have been allowed, and I don't, I think there's gotta be another option for this park. I mean, if you can park, I guess if you can park on, on this man's property, then you oughta be able to park on that man's property too. If the town is gonna allow it, it's the town's property. So you've, you've, you've given people an out, and they're gonna, as they get educated, they're gonna take that out, and this whole island's gonna be posted rope at some point, or a driveway.
Driveways is the most popular thing here, isn't it?
True.
Let the other gentleman speak, come on.
So, the commissioners?
The gentleman here would like to say something, but we allow him to speak.
I don't know.
Sir, no, no, you gotta speak into the microphone, where we can record you.
Hello there?
Yes, sir.
The clerk has to record what you say. You need to speak in the microphone.
Who you are and where you live.
Um, I'll come to these two off. I live down on Brunswick, uh, the right of way.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, but we need your name and where you stand.
Oh, my name.
Yeah.
Paul Swindler.
Address?
Three nineteen Brunswick Avenue West.
All right, floor is yours, sir.
I'm from Clemmons, North Carolina, second home, bought it fifteen years ago. Was told nothing was ever gonna be done on that lot. Of course, I didn't talk to a lawyer, but, anyway. Right, um, I have paved, not paved, but gravel coming all the way down to the road. And you're talking about right of ways? And I never have, I wouldn't want to, but if I came eight feet from the road, I guess, up, and put one of those little chain ropes across to keep people from pulling up in my driveway. So if I come down and, can anybody park, it's a right of way, I guess, can they park in front of my driveway and block me from getting in?
No.
But it's part of, so your driveway is not a right of way. I, I just, my ignorance here, I don't know. But when you're talking about all this parking and ropes, and post here, and post there, and right of ways, eight feet.
It's not a parkable place.
Why? It's got gravel, it's eight feet. I mean, you can park right in front of my.
People cannot keep you from going into and out of your property.
There you go, that's all I needed to know. I just.
Thanks, sir.
You got it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Who wants to speak?
Get, it gets down, the bottom line is to park in the situation on the island. I get it, people don't want people parking at the draw. You know? But also, I don't like the look of this post and rope everywhere. Just leaves, it gives a bad look for the whole island. That's my opinion. My opinion, okay? And, uh, I think we really need to get this parking committee moving, okay? But as for the motion I made, I'm withdrawing. Okay?
All right, who made the second?
I did.
And you agreed to withdraw it?
I agree to withdraw, but there still needs to be, the post and rope is okay, but they don't need me right next to the road.
So the motion, Madam Park, is withdrawn. All right, does anybody have another motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna move forward. Are we on number nine, please, Chief?
Yes, sir, please, that's correct.
I'll just get your green light shining there, Chief.
There we go, now. So, this month, we have hired our last, or filled our last position that we had vacant. Um, Officer Cranford comes to us with nine years of law enforcement experience, and she already holds her advanced law enforcement certification. So, she's coming to us with good knowledge base and good skill base already. So she's in our field training program, um, which gets us back full staff. So we're really looking forward to that, moving forward here in the summer.
Would you clarify?
Yes, sir.
Full staff, what that means, number-wise and assignment-wise?
Uh, full, full staff, as far as what we've been approved for in, in this last budget year. Um, we have a total of ten officers, which includes myself, so ten, ten-man department in total.
And detective position, where are you on that?
We do not have a detective's position right now, nor the, um, administrative cler, clerical position yet, but.
Excuse me for interrupting you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, that's fine.
Were you able to, uh, check on any training for some of the, one of the ten officers to be able to, to achieve some detective qualifications?
Yeah, I've actually looked into that, and we have actually had an officer who's, who's got several classes under his belt already.
All right.
Um, so, we're gonna try to do what we can with him, to be honest. But, again, it comes back to, you know, you just have to be very cautious about having officers doing dual duties like that. So, but he is getting the training and, and the experience.
He did do dual duty.
I, I, I did, that is, that is correct. But, but when you start sending patrol officers off of the beach to handle investigations, and they're not available to respond to calls where their primary duty is, is here on the beach, you get into a situation. I don't wanna start sending officers out into the county investigating crimes, you know. It's just, just not the way I want. I want officers over here to be available to respond to calls. Monitor traffic, golf carts, parking. We, we've got enough to do here that we don't need them, you know, out in the county doing investigations. Um, next thing I wanna talk about was, I, I talked about it last month, we actually have officially entered hurricane season now. Um, if anybody is not aware, luckily, we've not been affected, but, uh, the Atlantic tropics are already on their second-name storm. And there are two more storms out there, or two more disturbances, which the National Hurricane Center is monitoring. So, I'm not saying we're, we're in threatening, in threatening position right now, but please keep that in mind, hurricane season. Have your plan together. Know what you're gonna do if one starts to head our direction. Um, North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program is running an Operation Firecracker, um, across Fourth of July, which will be before we meet again. Uh, that's a Booze It and Lose It campaign, and we had, uh, good participation in the Memorial Day campaign, and expect to see our agency participating in the Booze It and Lose It campaign across Fourth of July. So, mind your manners, wear your seatbelt, slow down, watch for pedestrians, no texting and driving, no drinking and driving. Call for a ride. Um, and then the last thing, speaking of Operation Firecracker, is as we approach Fourth of July, firecrackers or fireworks on the beach are illegal. Uh, outside of your sparklers, which you hold in your hand, if it leaves, if it leaves the ground or goes boom, it is, it is illegal, and it is a class-two misdemeanor, which carries up to sixty days in jail and up to a thousand dollars fine. So just keep that in the back of your mind, if shooting that firework off is worth that. And, other than that, have a safe.
No, it's not the residence.
Other than that, have a safe Fourth of July weekend. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm.
It's not the residence.
It's, it's not, it's not.
I assume we're gonna have, like last year, that we're gonna have officers out, and they'll be watching for really blatant.
We, we will, we'll, we will have, we'll have extra patrols out during the holiday weekend. Um, the signs, we'll have some signs out, all kinds of stuff. So, try to, try to be high visibility and get the word out there. Other than that, questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be tried, glad to try to answer them.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I, just looking at the, at the activity log, you have, uh, two B and E's. Were, were they founded, or did we actually have two burglaries last month?
I, to be honest with you, I can't answer that right now, and I hate, I hate to say that. I did not even look at that number before I came in here, and I see the call. What that is, is we were dispatched to a B and E in progress. Um, I have not, I didn't have any officers come back to me and say, hey, we got on scene and somebody kicked the door in. Usually something like that, they, they call me, or are pretty good about communication. Since I have not had that communication, I'm gonna guess it, it was something that got called in as a B and E, and, and unfounded. And, and it happens, sometimes the neighbor will say, hey, I've never seen that person. I know my neighbor's supposed to be here. And, and come to find out, it was a cousin that, hey, I, you know, let my cousin come down, so.
There were thirty-five incident, incidents with, involving parking? Do you know if those resulted in any summonses, or what those thirty-five incidents are?
I don't, I don't know the exact number. I do know that over Memorial Day, there were a lot of parking tickets that were issued. Um, and I can, I should have been more prepared for this, and I do apologize. I can get you those exact numbers.
I, I have the same question on the twenty-six traffic stops.
I.
How many of those resulted in, in summonses?
All right, I, I will have to get you those numbers. I do apologize for being ill-prepared.
Yeah, I mean, I left you a message today earlier, I don't know if you, you got that.
I, I have not, no, sir.
Okay, well, I was asking to get the number of parking citations. I did get a chance to talk to Jessica during the week, uh, because, again, the sheer number of golf carts going up and down the road with, with children, uh, uh, improperly, uh, belted into the, the golf carts. And, uh, she said they, she had, it was up to number ninety-three on her parking tickets for, uh, since the beginning of the month. So evidently, there has been quite an influx of parking issues here on the island. And I asked her again, and I asked you, maybe if you could give us some information on the number of golf cart, either warning tickets or stops, or questions on, you know, the proper use of belts, and the proper age of drivers, and that kind of stuff, uh, on those, and maybe you can get that for us sometime. I did see there was an accident, uh, in a golf cart on High Point Street, in the corner of High Point Street and Boulevard, yesterday.
Yes, sir.
That did result in injuries. And, uh, as we, Adam and I were standing there, and Elise, the new female officer I got to meet yesterday too, we saw a, a couple drive by with baby in arms. Again, the scenario that I know is candy devil. So it, it's, and Adam just said, you know, he was working the accident, he couldn't go take off after them. But, you know, there, it's something that I know you are addressing and working with, but it, it's, it seems the number of golf carts have grown exponentially. It's, uh, you know, it used to be just every now and then, and, you know, I can mow my yard, which takes a grand total of ten minutes since he tinned golf carts. And there seems to be some that have been hopped up to the point, well, they've gotta be running forty-five miles an hour. And a slow, a low-speed vehicle, which they are licensed as, operate between twenty-one and twenty-five miles an hour. So if they're doing forty, you know, that's, you know, they're, they're, it, it's not what their intent is.
Right.
So again, I just, you know, that's one of my soft spots, is I'm just trying to save especially a child's life.
Yes.
Okay, I see. Thank you, gentlemen. You, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
I actually, I agree. The, the frightening thing I see is mama sitting in the front with a less-than-two-year-old in her lap. Somehow, the message has got to go out that whatever the age limit is that children are supposed to be in a seat and buckled in, that they have to be in a seat and buckled in, not on a lap, or we're gonna lose a baby.
It's just like an automobile.
Yeah, I know that you put, you put up about child restraints and all that. Somewhere, somebody has got to get the message across that if you have to have them in a seat in your car, they gotta be in a seat in this golf cart.
Yeah, we, we have, we've, we have actually talked to a lot of the rental companies, trying to get the word out there. We're spreading the word as much as possible. Um, you know, the only thing I can ask is for the community too, to, to do the same thing. If you talk to your neighbors, your friends, your family, please help us spread the word. We're, we're trying to get it out there as best we can as well. And I, I agree, we've seen an influx in golf carts in the last few years. So we're, we're doing everything we can to try to get ahead of it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we're gonna move to number ten on the agenda. Ms. Fillingham, how far?
Uh, the board has completed all the actions necessary to approve the adoption of the draft system development fee report. The report did not determine the rate of the tunnel charge for the fees. It establishes the maximum rate that the town can charge. So, um, after the report is adopted, as provided for in the resolution, the board can proceed with considerations to revise the existing water and fueler system fees. As we discussed last meeting, staff poses the report is given an effective date of October first. If the board desires to approve the report today, that allows time for us to determine what the fees will actually be. So the recommended motion is to approve Resolution Twenty-One Eleven, Resolution adopting the system development fees report.
Is there such a motion? Anybody?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve Twenty-One Eleven.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
Can we make it the September B O C, Em?
One of the reasons that we looked at the, the October, uh, date was to allow plenty of time for, um, uh, rumination over what those fees would be. Um, there are a number of interest, um, that will be generated. That'd be interesting, what these fees are proposed to be. Um, one, there's a number of different circumstances, and we just wanted to be sure that we allowed time for. time for someone that's got contract considerations going on to be able to have that, take that in consideration.
And these are broken down between the water is one part, and then the sewage or wastewater is another part?
Yes, sir.
Does the water part include the possibility of the new water tower, or the investigation into such?
The capital fee, or the maximum allowed charge that was... The water tower's included in the calculations.
For water, but not the sewage?
That's correct.
Correct, thank you.
Have I got a motion?
You have.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. And we are on number 13. Ms. Pat?
Were we supposed to move to approve the resolution specifically? I think we were, but...
For that?
Yeah.
That was the motion.
Okay. Okay, I periodically look at how committees run, what they're doing, and I want to start with, when I'm proposing something for the IBPB, it is not that I have any issues with how they operate, what they have been producing, their outputs on documents have been very good. But, when we created the IBPB, we did not have a lobbyist that was helping us, and in addition, we were not where we are today on having made a decision to have a core study done that will give us a report and recommendation in three years for a potential long-term plan. A number of the things that the board has done, the resolution about where sand should go when the Lockwood Folly Inlet is dredged, their short-term beach and inlet plan, those two things have been very useful to the town. Their investigations into things, the interaction with UNC Wilmington have been very good. But as I look at for the next two to three years, what the important items would be that the board would be asking for their advice, because they're an advisory committee, I am thinking that there is not a great deal that is needed for them while the core is sorting things out, while we as a town are doing the renourishment FEMA-funded, while we continue to work with our lobbyists on Lockwood Folly Inlet and what the proper things that need to happen should be. So knowing that every board takes town staff time for meetings, for interactions, minutes, et cetera, I looked at what it was we might want in advice for the next couple of years, the sort of benefit of keeping that committee going versus the amount of effort. And I believe that we should suspend the current effort on the IBPB until such a time as a board in future considers that they need, we need advice from an independent board again. And I would actually see that as being closer to when we get a core feedback on the 50, what I call the 50-year plan. So, I also look at it as there were certain things that were being done by that board on what I call do and help and maintenance, and that those activities specifically could be put into the Parks and Recreation Board's wheelhouse for them to continue those efforts for the foreseeable future. So I'm actually asking the board to consider releasing the current board from further duties with thanks for all of their efforts and their contributions. And however we do this appropriately to suspend the current ordinance, can hold something in reserve for IBPB if it wants to be reconstituted by a future board, but I don't see that in the next couple of years, we need this board functioning. So, I'm actually moving for the board to release the current, release the current board with thanks, and to take the necessary steps to suspend, or if it has to be... I don't know exactly what has to happen with the ordinance, and I actually could use the town attorney's help on this. But it seemed timely to do this, because I know that staffing the different boards, we're getting into that timeframe where board nominations are made.
You can pass the ordinance suspending it, or you can modify it. Sounds like if ultimately you're not going to use the services until after that three-year mark, a lot of those terms will probably be eventually over anyway.
Well, some of the terms are ending now, but I'm also looking at, I want it so that when the Board of Commissioners wants to reconstitute this board, that they give it their own remit, on their own duties again. So I'm sort of asking about suspending the ordinance and making it a blank. It's in reserve, and a new board would be given, a new remit, its set of duties from the board that requests it to come back together.
Yeah, either way, you decided it, we obviously have to do it through ordinance, and just kind of the Commissioners, which way you want to go with that.
Isn't it simpler just to remove it, and if you went back, you added back?
That would be the simplest way. I just don't know what your intention, I mean, that would be the cleanest way, but what you do.
Okay.
Do you want to clarify your motion?
Okay, I move that the board gives thanks to the current IBPB, releasing them from further duties, and that the current ordinance be removed until such a time as a future board... Well, we don't have to go into that, it'd just be removed.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just have one question, keep in mind, and as for Kristi, now, you know, we've moved, proposed, we've moved this over to the Parks and Rec Committee to take responsibility. Is that good with you? For the walkways and protection of the town's boom system?
The Parks and Rec Committee had the shoreline duties before the IBPB was formed. So if there's issues that need to go before them in that manner, they should be able to deal with that.
Thank you, Kristi.
Yes, sir.
My comment was going to have something to do with that. Before the inlet board was established, it was part of Parks and Rec. And when it was raised that they would have a separate board for the inlet protection, the people in the Parks and Rec objected to that strenuously. They wanted to be part of that board, and they had the opportunity to discuss it, and we had a couple of meetings. And I think before we vote on this, I haven't had any feedback from the current members of the inlet board, but I think we should give them the opportunity to express their opinion on whether they feel the need that they should continue in their current position, or whether we should suspend it. So I would think that we could put it on the agenda for next month before we vote on it.
I did get feedback from one board member who was accepting, thanked, basically had said that enjoyed everything, and asked that one of the things was to keep up the interaction with UNC Wilmington. I will say that this has been out there on the agenda. They did have a chance to respond, and I am surprised, I was surprised that we didn't have some of the board here. It's an advisory board at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. I would say that if the board is not certain, I understand, and if then want to give a chance for them to come and speak, that's fine, if the board is not certain.
I just feel that, we always say how much we admire the people who volunteer, and we value their work, and that I don't see why we can't give them the opportunity to speak for themselves and put this on next month's agenda. I see no harm in that at all.
I don't see, I need to push it down the road.
Motion is clear. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
For one, Madam Clerk. All right, are we on number 14? Madam Clerk, that's you.
We have a bunch of terms that are expiring in July, so if we can hold interviews at 4:45, or 6:45, we can do that at 4:45, and the July meeting, right before the meeting, and I can put the advertising out that we're looking for people to follow the term.
Any objections to that?
I said 4:45.
Yes, sorry. Why did you guys stay late?
And that's right before our next meeting?
Yes.
All right, everybody's okay with that?
I'll second you, Jim.
July 14.
Question.
All right, so we are on number 15, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay.
Weren't we going to do the budget amendments after 14?
That's right.
Budget amendments, 14, yeah, 14A. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Yeh.
Yes, sir, as I referenced earlier, these are strictly housecleaning items that we need to take before the end of the year. That's the good news. Probably some more good news, we might have to do some more housecleaning items at the meeting in July. The economy seems to be of a consumptive nature, and we may need to do some more housecleaning in July to make sure that everything is lashed down tight for the end of the fiscal year. The first one, ordinance 2114 reflects the increased consumption for the sewer treatments, and that is on the order of $244,134, recognizing revenues that are projected to come in, pay the county, and also accommodate upgrade of the operations and/or continue the operations of the vacuum sewer system. I can go through all of these if you want, what's your pleasure? They're all the same rationale.
So what you're saying is we're increasing what we need to buy, and what we're going to sell, so we need to make sure those adjustments are in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Going before we approve the budget?
No, this is, y'all have already approved the budget. This is the existing budget as it exists today. We've basically used 12 months of water and sewer in 11 months, and that's what we need to accommodate by the water, the sewer amendment, the water amendment, and also the recycling is the same set of circumstances. Our recycling cans, I don't know if it's because the ordinance that was passed on not giving credit for a blue can or not, or just because more people are going that way. We've got those increased expenses, and they're passed through from the revenue side. Likewise, on the system development fee, one, because we've had more houses built, the sewer system development fee that we've been collecting has to be placed over in a capital reserve. Since we've exceeded our estimations for that occurring this year, I've got to make sure that we're compliant with the Physical Control Act. These are, like I said, they're housecleaning events, they don't represent any increased cost, they're all revenue-driven.
Thank you, David. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the budget-related ordinance, this 2114, 15, 16, 19, 17, as written.
Second.
All right, Mr. Brown made the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, it's unanimous. So now, we're going to go back to Mr. Sullivan. Try again.
Okay. The Audit Committee requires that the chairman of the committee be a member of the Board of Commissioners. Since Commissioner Tyner moved and removed the vison from the board, they haven't had a chairman. And so I think it's time that we nominate one, and so that the committee is supposed to meet four times a year, and they're supposed to do certain things, and I think it's time that we fill the vacant spot. So, I think we should nominate someone tonight to fill that position.
Try to calm down with your enthusiasm.
I got that deep beer, dude. Can I go for that, sir? Can I nominate you for that position?
No good deed does unpunished, that wasn't the...
Cruel and unusual.
Yeah, that wasn't why I brought it up.
Was that a motion? Was that a motion?
I was actually thinking of, I was actually thinking of Commissioner Kwatowski. I would nominate, I would nominate Commissioner Kwatowski for that position.
She's Mike White, she's not defending herself.
It's only for a few months, it's just to lead a couple of meetings. I can do this, because there's an audit committee full of very qualified people.
Yes, ma'am. I looked at the committee personnel, and they are very qualified.
And it's just organizing meetings, leading, and we're making sure things gets done. I can do this.
Well, I made the motion, somebody has to second it.
You made the motion, aye. You want a second? She's further away from it.
No, I like the, I like the motion, we...
You already made the motion. He's got a second.
Okay.
Who was the second?
You.
You're the second.
That's right.
Everybody understand the motion? Ms. Pat become the commissioner for the Audit Committee. All right, have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Pat.
Yeah.
You took a big raise.
For the good of the town.
For the good of the town. Sacrifices yourself, okay. Number 16, Ms. Pat?
Okay. The Parking Committee has been in place for a while, we've suffered a little bit from Woody leaving, we've got to meet people, and I know that Mike and I have continually been saying, you know, we need things about, you know, putting together a plan, revised set of different bits and pieces of the report of what we would expect back, but I thought this is probably the perfect time to pull out the tasker that we developed, to have a formal request to a committee. So I put together, and I shared it with Brian ahead of time, because Brian's in charge of the Parking Committee, about, you know, I was thinking, this was the sort of kind of information we would like from the Parking Committee. Now, if we can all agree with this, this is a formal request form from the Board of Commissioners to a committee. And then there is actually a description of sort of what should be in that committee's report back to the Commissioners that addresses the charge question, and that's a form that Heather can provide to the Parking Committee, because it has minutes with it, if they vote, it says, you know, what the votes are and things. But if we can agree that this is what we're asking that committee to do and feed back to us, then it clarifies the purpose, and we're likely, more likely to get something back in the fall, that there's not going to be... back in the fall, that there's not going to be gaps in what different people expect. So I put together something that was my opinion of what a good report back would be that would let me make a decision on the overall plan and on the assumption we're doing paid parking, the finances, the revenues and expenditures. If anybody doesn't like some of this, I'm not gonna take it personally, because again, this was my thinking of what should be involved and how it could be presented, but we all should agree on what we want that committee to give to us to help us make a decision. And I proposed that it come back to us no later than the October B O C M, because I think the five of us that have been working on parking and have more or less come to agreement on we need to really go with paid parking should make the decision on the recommendations. If it gets any later, there's three open positions in the Board of Commissioners. We don't know what the five's gonna be come December. So that's why I put the deadline for October. So my motion would be that we provide the Parking Committee with this request from the Board of Commissioners, but I am open to changes or amendments if people want them. So that's my motion.
All right, looking for a second?
There.
All right, discussion?
Well, what I, the first Parking Committee meeting that I attended as a new commissioner while I was Brian, we elected three people to that commission. One showed up. So, I mean, it's, you know, we're, now we're gonna give them a list of what to do's.
Well, it's you two. You're, it's you two too, because you're on the committee.
Correct.
So I will guarantee you that as Commissioners, you will be, I would just say, leading gently. So I'm particularly interested in your acceptance of these ideas. And I'm particularly interested in Mike, too, because he and I have been always saying, we need a plan.
Exactly.
I'll just chime in. I've read this. So all of this stuff pretty much has to be addressed before we could even implement it anyway, so I don't see any... At first, I don't, I didn't suggest that we needed any direction, but this doesn't hurt to have something to look at, but all this has to be done before we can get through the process anyway, so I don't see any harm in it. You gotta start, you gotta start somewhere with it, so.
Do you think it needs to, you pushed all the way out to October?
Oh, I'd like it done in a month.
That's, you know, that's...
She's just suggesting October, but...
I said no later than October. No later than October.
I think we get it done before then, but, you know.
I would like to think that we could, right?
She's just suggesting, suggesting I think that if we get it in later than October, we're not gonna have time to implement it.
Well, that's why I was saying more like September.
You can push it up if you want. I'd change it to where?
You've gotta have a meeting to all agree you're doing it, so I can tell you now that you're gonna need at least two months, and probably three, but again, no later than October it needs to be finished.
You have a second?
If I could add to the discussion?
Sure.
Just for the board, and we ain't got down to the manager's report, there was a request for proposal for parking, paid parking services that went out last week, and part of that proposal on the comebacks to us requested very similar items in what the, what Ms. Pat's...
Okay, this is the first. David's never called me Ms. Pat before.
Commissioner Kay's document outlines that should be before you, I forget off the top of my head, we gave him a couple, three weeks, but it's, we'll be back in time for the July meeting before the Commissioners to take a once-through on what you wanna do. And I only add that because some of the materials that we've asked for in the request for proposals is similar to this.
Who schedules the Parking Committee meetings?
They're scheduled.
There's a, it's a scheduled meeting. Heather, do you know, it's the first...
First Friday each month at ten a.m.
First Friday each month?
Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Madam should pass.
So another question, thank you, meeting. What time are their meetings, Heather?
Ten a.m.
All right, Ms. Pat, number seventeen.
Okay.
Priorities.
This is, I just wanted to get this done. We shouldn't have to do much. We have gone through creating our objectives, scoring our objectives. Heather has nicely grouped them by points that they obtained, and generally, we sort of decide to draw a line at a certain point and say we should, we should do everything possible, get everything done above this line, and things that are below the line, if you have something you're passionate about and you want to pursue it and bring it to the board, you can do it, but it's not, it's not sort of our agreed list of priorities to accomplish in the fiscal year. So, you know, typically, we pick a number. You know, we look at how the numbers fall out in terms of the points they get, and we sort of pick a, anything above, everything above thirteen and above, or fourteen and above, or fifteen and above. So that's simply what I'm, at this point in time, recommending we do, is we draw a line and say, here's where we're gonna focus to get, to get done in the fiscal year, and the other stuff, if we can do some of it, great, but it's not our priority. And if anybody has any questions on individual objectives that they want to better understand, now's the time to ask.
Comments, discussion? Anybody? Ms. Pat, do you have a number you'd like to throw out?
Um, I kinda looked at everything above, everything thirteen and above that we try to get done. That was just reading them, looking at them. Some of these are, some of these are things that are just gonna happen. They have to happen. And there's only so many months in the year, but this is sort of the checking things off to make sure we get them done.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
There's only twelve, there's only so many months in the year. There's only so much staff that we have. Goals, goals are supposed to be strategic. If you go at thirteen, you got twenty-five goals. I don't think that that's being strategic in thinking. I think that's being detail-oriented, and that you should have faith in the staff enough to understand that these are the items that the board is interested in, and that your, that your focus should be on the strategic ten things or less. There's a great line at seventeen that is twelve items, that those things are general in nature and would serve to focus general strategic efforts at what the town is supposed to do. You've identified a whole bunch of other, other things that, you know, all together, there's, there's thirty things, thirty-five or forty things here to do. We get that, and we've tried to accommodate that through incorporating those things where we can. We hear that. Until they become conflicting amongst themselves, twenty-five goals is a bit much. I don't think that any Fortune Five Hundred company in America's got twenty-five goals.
Half of these, I think, are done. A third to half of them are basically done or in hand, because again, when we create, we create these so far in advance. You know, I just, I just look at it as, as, I know I say draw the, but ensure funding for hurricane-related FEMA projects, proceed with necessary steps for commencement. Okay, it's, that's in hand. That's, that's just, that's top priority, but it's, it's not waiting to start. Things like balance the budget while preserving the minimum fund balance is defined by the board. That's an ongoing, it all, balance the budget without raising taxes. It's sort of a, we did that. A lot of these, a lot of these are well in hand or done. If we actually took out everything that I would say is, is either a given, an evergreen, it's a general, make sure that we get a clean audit and things, there aren't that many to be started, I would say. I mean, that's just, that's just my opinion as I, as I read these. It's not, it's not twenty-five things. It's not, it's not very many new things to start. But we can bring it back next month. If you want a clearer delineation of what the ones are that are, let's just say, new activities?
Well, I mean, from my perspective, if you recall in the past, this has been a planning document that started at the beginning of the budget process to set up for what goes into the budget. As far as I'm concerned, from the budget side, we've accomplished, you know, the board's decisions are not, you've accomplished the things that you wanna put in play with that, with that spending plan that you've approved.
Sports pleasure in the past, again, we've kind of drawn the line and made sure by the end of the year that everything above the line had gotten dealt with one way or another.
Let's try to move along. What are you gonna do?
I look at these, this list, and I see that a lot of them we've already been able to take care of.
As I said, yeah, because we start creating this early in the year. A lot of these are done or well in hand. They're not novel, but they're not, they're not new things. There's a few things in here that are new.
Should we maybe address this list between now and the next meeting and adjust it to what has not been taken care of, that we would like to have taken care of?
This, this list belongs to the Board of Commissioners. The board can choose to do that. It would streamline things.
Pat, why don't you take from thirteen up and diminish it down, so...
So you're asking...
David, I'll have a clear understanding.
So am I getting tasked with doing this?
Ms. Pat, yeah, that's kinda what I was hinting at.
You know, we think, obviously, one of us up here thinks that every one of these on this whole list is important, so I, it, there's no way we can get them all done, and David on that, so we just, we gotta do the best we can.
You want me to...
But I would show it up, because some of them are...
Done or in hand, yes.
Really don't, it's common sense stuff.
So just list the, I would just say, as David, the, the unstarted and strategic things, and create a shorter list.
Please, Ms. Pat.
All right.
All right, so where are we? So the chair understands.
I have work to do.
We're gonna put on next month's agenda, is that it?
Ms. Pat volunteered, is that what I heard?
You heard it. Next month's agenda?
Correct.
Let's move, folks. We gotta go.
All right, we go on to the next agenda. Number eighteen, public comments on anything you wanna talk about. Anybody in the audience? Mr. Ashley, come to the microphone, tell us who you are and what you got on your mind.
Ashley Royal, one forty-four Salford Drive. It's a pleasure to be back here in person instead of having to listen to the deliberations, but I want to express my appreciation to the mayor and the board for continuing to conduct business in, in the midst of COVID. I just want to share my opinion on a few things. When I was on the board, I experienced some cases to where there were ordinances made, and it was clear that they were based on a personal preference, and I think we pay a price for that. The right-of-way ordinance, I think, is another example of that, and, you know, I believe in the Hippocratic Oath, you know, at first, do no harm, and I think what we, I think the town is best served if we really take a look at, any time a proposed ordinance comes before you, really ask, okay, what's the cost of it, and what is the real gain? And if, if there's not a clear gain, I think we should opt not to implement something new. You know, change management is, is a principle where you evaluate, you know, what's the cost of it? What does it cost to communicate it? And the more you add, from a citizen's perspective, the more ordinances we have, the harder it is to just keep track of, okay, what is, as a good citizen, what am I supposed to follow? So I just encourage the board to really look at, frankly, I would encourage getting rid of the ordinance on the street right-of-ways. Right-of-ways, you know, there are, there's a reason for right-of-ways, so we have access to important utilities, and I just think this, this, this ordinance really is, goes against all of what, what is intended for, for a right-of-way. In terms of parking, it, and again, I may have missed some of the previous meetings, but it almost seems like we have presupposed that parking is gonna be paid parking. And, you know, I believe that the majority of us on this island are blessed with more resources than the folks across the bridge, and I think we should look hard at, do we really want paid parking? Because the economic disparity for those in Brunswick County who want to come to the beach, this would be an added financial burden for them to have to pay for parking. One consideration could be that if you really want paid parking, maybe allow, you know, if you're a Brunswick County resident, you get a pass, but if you're visitors, my time up.
Three minutes.
So I would just encourage maybe to take a second look at paid parking, but in, in the other thing I would offer in terms of parking, the challenges, and it goes back to be careful what we implement, because the more parking we have... and it goes back to be careful what we implement, because the more parking we have, the more traffic we have, the more amenities the town has to provide. You know, we, we are blessed with a lot of renters on the island during the summer. It provides great resources for us. Our B-Park Fund benefits from it. But at, at some point, there, there's a balance we have to work out, is the more people who are here, the, you could in, insert a potential negative impact to that by people who may be renting say, wow, I was here last year, you know, it took me forever to get across the bridge. And so all of those things need to be considered. And I think I've shared before to some of you that, to me, parking is one of these things that really can correct itself. When you run out of parking, you run out of it. We have an obligation to provide some parking, I believe, to the public, but, and we do get grants, grant monies for that, and I understand insurance rates are, are positively impacted if we have, you know, sufficient parking. But I'm just concerned about, I've, I've lived in towns before where development continues to, to occur to where the, the infrastructure of the area ends up being impacted, where it just affects the quality of life. So I, I just encourage the board to look at that in terms of impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak about anything? All right, if not, we'll move on to Mr. Hewitt, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. Elson, the auditor, is on site this week for our audit.
In thirty June twenty-one, I do want to make the board aware that there will be some potential scheduling conflicts on some of the borrowings that are currently being contemplated. If we are going to go to the local government commission for approval on any of our borrowing, not the special obligation bond one, but some of the other items, the water, the sewer lift station outfit in November, it's going to back up our audit requirement because the LGC wants to have an early audit. Don't know what that means in terms of money. And also, the LGC wants our audit, once it's submitted to the local government commission, it has to be briefed to the Board of Commissioners within forty-five days. Since our contract is for October thirty-first, submitted to the local government commission, if we go to the December meeting as we normally do, that's on the twenty-first this year, that's going to be outside of that. I only put a marker in the sand because we may have, in order to accommodate that schedule or we receive guidance, otherwise we may have to call a special meeting in order to accommodate that forty-five day schedule. Want to give a status on the street paving effort. The engineer's schedule for Seagull is approximately eight months, two months beginning in July and August for surveys and designs. Looks like it might take September, October, November, three, three months to get permits for it, although that timeframe might compress, we might be able to compress it. What that means, I, I don't know. Looking at a December bidding and contract award date with construction potentially in January and February, I will not recommend that we do paving in the cooler months. We need to at least get to the Easter timeframe so that, you need to pave when it's hot, not July fourth or on the holiday weekend. We've been pretty successful with, over the last several years, on our streets resurfacing, finding that sweet spot.
Between holidays. Suffice it to say, it's going to take about eight months to, to pull Ravel to pave, pave Like mentioned before, our paid parking services, RFP, is out on the street, should be back before the Commissioners at the July meeting. Status on FEMA, we've got one last project worksheet we're waiting approval on. The ESAEAS-C triple D came through, that's about a hundred and nine thousand dollars for administrative purposes. That's the one we're waiting on. We've responded back to that, concurring with it. We will be proceeding whether we have the approval on that PW with the local government commission. We're not going to let that hold up, that forty-six million dollar train application. It will, once we get it though, it will require a budget amendment in order to recognize those funds. The debris removal for ESAEAS was approved for eighty-six thousand dollars, but the state is cut, has stopped cutting checks for the end of the fiscal year. We're not going to expect those until mid to late July. But the important thing to note, I think, is that the beach strand cleanup effort or expenses, that request for reimbursement was disapproved. So we're not going to get the money back on that now. I believe that was about forty thousand dollars. Moving on to the Lockwood-Falling Inlet Crossing Maintenance Project and the AIWW, we've been contacted again by the Corps in order to gauge interest about the next dredging cycle of sand coming to Holden Beach. I've reaffirmed the town's intent to participate via our appropriation in the budget that starts the first of July. That volume is about a hundred thousand dollars and the Corps is looking to make a contract award at the end of July. The inlet navigation maintenance or the throat or the ocean bar efforts there, I want to make sure that we're noting just three weeks after the spring inlet crossing, the one that, the sand is coming to Holden Beach on this cycle, three weeks after the sand went to Oak Island and placed the sand from the crossing on Oak Island, that the inlet bar is being reported in the worst shape effort by the Lockwood-Falling Inlet Association in front of the Brunswick Beaches Consortium and various media outlets. It's my opinion, and mine alone, the board is, and has been on record with saying that the town, that the sand from the Lockwood-Falling Inlet needs to be placed on the east end of Holden Beach because of lateral drift. That project, basically, it looks like to me, they pumped the sand from the crossing to the ocean bar. It, it, it's a failure. That project's a failure. The Corps had, subsequently, the Corps has scoped a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar one-time effort for a series of exploratory, exploratory sorties by the side caster to open the ocean bar. It would require seven-hundred-thousand dollars of MOA funding immediately. The stakeholders, David Kelly from Oak Island, myself, and Steve Stone, the deputy county manager, the three managers involved with that issue have cooperated to provide direction for the Corps to proceed with the two-hundred-thousand dollars that they have in hand to see just what can be done. Once that happens, we'll reevaluate the results in July. So I could very, very well be back in front of you asking for an appropriation for a temporary measure to get across the bar. We don't know. We'll just have to see what, what goes with that. On our vegetation project, contractors making good progress currently. Three fifty Ocean Boulevard West is where they're located at. The Parks and Rec master plan's moving right along. Matter of fact, it's almost complete. Looking at July for a presentation to both the Parks and Rec Board and the Board of Commissioners. I understand that tie-dye'd started today and it looked like that, that half of, of, there was more people there than there is on Walmart on a Saturday, it lit light in me. And, and, and the first two concerts are under our belt and suffice it to say, from the drone shot that I saw, they were well attended. I hope they didn't disturb Mr. Murdock across the way. There, there was a lot of people there at both of those concerts. And we're looking forward to North Tower on this Sunday. That's all for me.
Any questions or comments of Mr. Hewitt? Okay, mayor's comments will be brief. Following up on the concerts, Chris continues to do a great job in putting that together for us. I would like to say too, that the police department has done a great job in being present and monitoring the activities there. Having seen none of disappointing characters, problem makers or anything like that, the crowd seemed to be happy and having a good time. Also, the garden at the intersection, I've received a lot of comments about that, positive comments, and also about the appearance of the town hall, all the pretty flowers out front, a lot of positive comments about that. And also, in regards to our Public Works Department, the right of ways here on the island, our streets look good. And also, the sweeping of the bridge cleaned up a lot of trash and dirt on the bridge. That was noticed by several of our visitors and owners. The beach grass continues to be a discussion, people asking about that, and it's always good to see a continuation of our efforts to grow our ocean front. We had a boat that turned over in the inlet in the last few days. No, no one got hurt. The bug got caught sideways and the wave did it in, so to speak, but the boat was towed in by one of towboat services. We had a drowning on the island, I believe, since the last town meeting. And a gentleman trying to rescue some children. And positive comments about our playground out front. Every year, it amazes me how, how we seem to grow in numbers of the participants out there. And as we sit here in the meeting tonight, you know, the basketball players, I don't know of anything that, that I have more comments about in this town than the playground and everything that we have across the street. So it looks good. Comments about the new paint on the, on the courts, all positive. I don't really have a whole lot of negative comments to bring forth to you tonight. I'm just proud of this town. We're doing a lot of good things and all of you are a part of it. And thank you very much for, for being here. And those of you that are elected and, and work for the town, congratulations on a good start to a good summer. And Mr. Brown, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, what kind of news do you have?
Number one, I'd like to thank the staff. Jeremy, I know you've got a lot going on right now. I see the boys hustling. Chris, you've got those boys that are either on a weed eat, digging a hole for, for a sewer hook up or whatever. Just like to thank you. The attorney, good that you're here, keep us out, keep us in the right, in the right way. And Reggie, I really, I enjoyed your commentary. I mean, you see where we're at, we, we, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough call on a lot of these issues, you know? You know, we, what we, our goal from the very beginning is to do what's right for the town, always. You know, we don't have any, you know, set agendas, you know? And, and, you know, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to be said about parking. It is, you know, it, it's going to work out some kind of way. We just hope it'll work out in a good, positive way for the town, you know? And David, thanks for the good work you do.
Thanks, sir.
You, you've got everything going and it's good to see the faces around. Come on back, bring a buggy next, next month, okay? Because I know you, you can round up one or two, okay? So bring a couple of your friends and, and, and just everybody stay safe for the summer, okay? Looks like we've got a good one coming our way and, and a good crowds, good folks, and let's just have good times and stay safe.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I've got to echo the same things about our town staff. Chris and his staff do an excellent job of keeping this island looking good. I really appreciate it. The guys always seem to address things immediately when we need to take care of them. Jeremy, with this influx of people coming in, man, with the full staff of officers now, you guys are doing a great job with a lot of visibility. We've got our vehicles in, that's great. Good to see them on the road. Again, Christie with Pete Parks Recreation, seeing that crowd at the tie-dye, tie-dye deal today was, might put a smile on my face. It's good to see, good to see Holden Beach getting back to normal. And David, with your efforts on the budget and so forth and making sure we're getting everything covered, it is very much appreciated, sir. The only thing I, I want to bring up again, and you know I'm going to do it every time, is we need to take some, to take, really make some moves to put some regulations on these golf carts somehow via the rental companies. We don't need to do it as Holden Beach, we need to rely on those guys to do it. I don't know what it's going to take to get it on the agenda, but we need to somehow or another put the monkey on them to, to make sure what they're bringing to our island is the safest possible golf cart they can be with all of the DOT requirements at the time they bring them over. And as with, with anything like that, we might need to put out some recommendations to them for them to have some, maybe some, some safety suggestions that they give to the people when they bring the carts over. Move over if you've got ten cars behind you. You know, and, and just, just make sure that we don't, you know, let them cause more problems than, than need be. But overall, I think the, the town of Holden Beach looks the best I've seen it in years. Everybody's houses are painted really nice. They've really done a good job of doing landscaping and the island is full. I took a picture today from the eight-hundred block and as far as you could see, east or west, there was nothing but cabanas and, and people out on the beach. And it's good to see all these people enjoying this beautiful place.
Mr. Murdock?
Need to make no comment. Mr. Ashley? I used your name wrong, girl, so you have to forgive me. I said, maybe he's a man of the cloth after all.
Mr. Murdock?
Ashley, I do want to say, we'll be glad to slide another chair up at those parking committee meetings if you're, if you're so inclined to join. It's, it's a really hard subject there. I mean, it's, I, I hope we can figure it out. I mean, the, the problems of trying to eliminate right-of-way parking and keeping people out of yards and off of marshes and things like that. And then also providing, like you said, it's going to be a finite number. Once it's said and done, it's not going to, it's not Myrtle Beach and it won't ever be. We need a reasonable amount of parking spaces, so we're, we'll come to some happy medium there, I feel like, without burdening anybody, hopefully. Only problem with that is obviously trying to figure out how to pay for something that we don't have, so that's why we may have to charge a little bit. I will tell you, David, those concerts are great. We sit over there on the back all those pun tunes and listen to them and watch the people dance and carry on from over there. And I'll pile on to something Alan said about the, the looks of the properties in Holden Beach and the right-of-ways and town hall and all that stuff. It looks really great over here. I'd like to see it look really great at the other end of that bridge. I think we could maybe, I don't know what, we could send the ladies over there to plan a few things or something like that and maybe the DOT wouldn't get mad at us, but I, I would like to see a little bit of emphasis put on our doormat over there. But overall, I'm glad to see everybody. I want to see more people at the meetings and I'd love to hear a lot of, a lot more public comment. I wish people would come and speak and, and talk with us and we need all the input we can get to make the right decision, so good to see everybody.
Mr. Sullivan?
I'd say it's more people here this meeting than last meeting, so it's, it's good to see and hopefully more people will come in the future and we'll get the benefit of their opinions and, and input. Number two, I guess after what was just said by the mayor and Brian, we should thank the Beautification Club. They're the people who did the plantings around the building and the plantings over in Patrick Park. And they, they do a, they do an excellent job and get very little recognition for it. do an excellent job and get very little recognition for it, so we'll give them a shout out. And last but not least, before the next meeting in July, the filing for a position on this illustrious board will be from July 2nd to July 16th. So if anybody's interested in being part of the solution and wants to sit on the board, they'll have to, they'll have to register for November 2nd selection. And as I said, the filing is July 2nd through the 16th.
Ms. Pat?
Well, everybody always says everything before you get down to, poor number six, five or six, or you got number six. But it's really good to see people here. I'm looking forward to a really great summer. I've been walking on the strand a lot. There are a lot of happy people out there. I've been, I've been really pleased to see the beach rangers out interacting with people. I have yet to see a dog on the beach during the hours. They're not supposed to be on the beach, so I think we're starting, we're starting out really well. Everybody, I just hope that you can come to the next meeting and the next, and next. Next meeting, we're going to have several interesting items to discuss. And everybody just have a happy and safe summer.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. I believe we are now looking at the possibility of going into the executive session. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. All of the papers here. Madam clerk, you want to read your thing?
Yes, sir. Executive session, North Carolina General Statute 1433181185, concerning the negotiation of the price and terms of the contract concerning the acquisitions of real property.
All right. Five-minute recess.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Are we in order to, to do that, Madam Attorney? Everything's-
I've got everything I need.
All right.